Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our February 5 Township Council meeting. Madam Clerk?
This is to inform you that the general public is being held in compliance... I'm sorry. Hold on a minute. This is not...
We can do a redo.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you. I hope everyone is enjoying the warmer weather, the nice, you know, warm temperatures, a nice breeze, no snow, no... You know, it's all good. I hope nobody lost their pipes, so that's good, too. Starting right off atop of our agenda, on our conference agenda, is update on redevelopment. Mr. Saris, please.
Redevelopment is moving along. Again, there's more than 100 units rented now in the second piece of the property. I was by there today. I don't know if you drove around and put up some nice trees.
Yeah.
They've really a lot of nice stuff on the outside and make it look better. I talked to them about Phase 2 yesterday, and I was advised that they're looking at 30 and 45 days to have the plans submitted. And I talked to him also about commercial properties, because I knew that was going to be your business tonight. And there are some people looking at their commercial properties, and he was actually talking to me, not telling you who they are or what they are, but there are some, there's actually restaurants looking for a license to go in there. So that's where we're at.
Okay. Mr. Saris, any notice when the park area will be open? That was... You know, when you go to... There's a gated entrance to the development, and there's supposed to be an open park with...
To be honest, I did not ask him about that.
Okay.
But I will find out the answer to that question.
Okay. Any...
Yeah. I don't... I mean, just going through the landscaping plan, that was really just beautifully landscaped, but I would not consider that a public park. I mean, you can walk through because you'll park your cars there. There are 99 spaces for public parking, but I think it's just beautifully landscaped. That's the plan.
I'm sorry. I was under the impression, too, when they first did the whole layout, that it would be open to the public and they could walk through and...
Of course. Well, yeah. It would be. I guess I didn't think of it as a park.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino, any comments on development?
No, I just look forward to going there Thursday.
Oh, yes, right. Thursday, 5:30. 5:30?
5:30. 5:30. So, you know, we have a tour through there on Thursday.
They're gonna give you a tour of the second piece of the building, yeah, on the battery building.
Yeah. We'll walk through the whole thing, so I can't wait to go to the top floor and see the penthouse apartments.
See the penthouse apartments.
Yes.
John Gross wants a red one. I'm very happy with that one.
Councilwoman Matute Brown, any comments about redevelopment?
No, thank you. Thank you for that date.
Okay. Councilwoman Krokoviac?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Any else? Okay, so we look forward to the open house, and I noticed on Saturday, the other night coming home, Friday night, that there were a lot of cars parked in front of the development and had it all lit up upstairs. They must've had some event going on, but it looked like a lot of people going in and out, so seemed to be in attraction. Good for them. Council Liaison, Councilwoman Castellino?
Sure. Well, my meeting to the Degnan House was canceled in January, so I'll have an update, I think, if not the next meeting, the meeting after, I think the 21st is my next meeting. So I look forward to that update. Last time, we were working on the senior... Health Department with the Senior Citizen Grant for Partners in Health, Partners for Health, and that has been submitted, so we look forward to hopefully receiving that grant. I just want to thank the community. We had to go out and receive some letters of support, and so all the community organizations just reading all our partners in the community and all the great things that they do for our seniors, I hope we're awarded the grant, just, you know, with all the volunteer support and with the public library, the West Orange African American Association, Heritage Association, the Hispanic Foundation, just in the school district, just reviewing all of the partnerships was very exciting, and we look forward to expanding on that if we receive the grant. In regards to anything else, I work on a few other projects with some of my other boards that I'm not ready to share at this time, and I just want to share with the public a lot of new... As you've been driving around town, we've had a lot of new... A few new restaurants opened up. Nicholas Anthony has been wonderful. I finally got an opportunity to go there. I know the yoga studio had just opened. We have up on the back of Kmart Shopping Plaza, the Blow Dry Bar is gonna be opening up this week, and they have a ribbon cutting next week. So it's just exciting, just for everyone to go out and support all their new local businesses that are becoming open, so good luck to all of them.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Present. Councilwoman Matute Brown?
None for me, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman McCartney?
Okay, thank you. So the same with the rental house. The board did not meet in January, but we will meet on Monday, February 11. Luna Stage is... Has a production of Rowan at the Gates, a really powerful play at Luna Stage at 555 Valley Road, Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays, at 7:30, Sunday at 3:00, and that will run until February 24. The Arts Council will meet this Thursday, February 7, at 7:00. We meet at the Valley Arts Center, the Arts Council Center, at 551 Valley Road at 7:00 PM. And Arts Talk with Janet Mandel. It's free, but registration is necessary. They already have 17 people registered. That's going to be March 19 at 7:00. Tomorrow, though this won't air, tomorrow is the Chamber Annual Breakfast. This will be at the Wilshire Grand at 8:00, to present the Mayor's State of the Town Address. And let's see, and the Planning Board. Planning Board will, again, meet tomorrow. We have an application for Harrison Avenue, which I mentioned last time when Megan was giving her presentation about investments along the main corridor. The master plan update was canceled January 29. It'll be due to the weather, but that will be... We'll find out when that will be rescheduled. And the next Planning Board meeting will be Wednesday, March 6, and we meet here in Council Chambers at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Update for me, we'll have the... On February 13, we have our monthly West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board meeting to be held at Essex County ECE at Turtle Bag Zoo. We hope you'll make the effort to attend. We'll be talking over some additional things, going over some issues that our students from West Orange High School are working on. Over last week, we did a light sensitivity study on Pleasant Valley Way with the students and Mike Damon Miller, so we got some good readings, some good spots and everything else, and they'll be reporting on their findings. It was cold that night, so we all got out there. We also got the responses back from the engineering and architectural firms at Essex Green about our safety improvements and changes. I sent out to my board... My select board members who were there, and they're supposed to review it and get back to me when any changes or additions. So it's moving forward. It looks like we'll get what we're asking for. They made points about additional traffic lights, the safety lights at Marion Drive, so hopefully that'll move forward and it'll make it even more a safer environment for our residents and shoppers and walkers. Also, working with Easy Ride, Easy Link, New Jersey, towards the end of February, early March, we're planning a townwide Safe Roots to School presentation with Easy Ride, Easy Link. We got the Silver Award last year. We're going for the Gold this year, so hopefully we'll get more parent involvement from the PTAs from the schools to work on our Safe Roots to Schools. It's a great program, and we have some great volunteers from the West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board, particularly Lori Caffener, who's been very, very motivating in moving this forward. So there'll be information going out as to when this townwide meeting will take place. And Easy Ride, Easy Link is very, very supportive of our efforts for the school environment. Megan, I'd like to ask, do you have anything too new about our new businesses on Main Street or anything about the Downtown West Orange Alliance? Would you bring us up to date? Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's like...
That's okay. There's lots of microphones here. Thank you, Council President. We have tons of stuff happening in every part of the corridor. I guess the most exciting news is really the opening of Nicholas Anthony Family Kitchen. And you can go on our website and check out the way the place looks, their menu, a good little soundbite about why they called it the Family Kitchen and what their thoughts are about that. I know Michelle was there, had dinner over a couple of weeks ago. You know, the place is crowded. They seem excited. You can park right on their own parking lot. You can park in the Quigley Lot, so that's down in Eagle Rock. We have the opening of two new stores in Torrey Corner, which is the Yoga Studio on 96 and 98 Washington Street, and Celeste Bakery, which is across the street, right in the, like, really the hub of Torrey Corner. And his sign just went in today. We did tweak it, tried to make it a little bit better. He's from Uruguay and has wanted the sign to reflect his country's flag, and he really did a nice job. There's pictures. I've been posting stuff. I didn't eat anything, but... Some of us crazy diet, but Rick had the empanadas and some, like, Napoleon-looking thing, but he's got stuff that looks like pizza game, really, really neat, you know, array. He'll be adding more food items, more like a restaurant, in addition to all his baked items. The yoga gala, I did take yoga yesterday, so she's having a soft opening for the next couple of weeks. If we knew how the weather was gonna be, we'd plan some ribbon cuttings, but it's hard in some of the smaller stores to get everybody in, and if it's freezing cold out, it wouldn't be a happy ribbon cutting. So we're kind of waiting about another month to see how the weather shakes out, and then we'll have big celebration in all those stores. But that's at least the three newest stores that we have downtown.
Thank you.
But we are also holding a Valentine's Light contest, so we're pushing out... Actually, I'm gonna go back downstairs and finish editing the forms. We'll push that out, so you'll be able to see all of the storefronts and vote for your favorite storefront. We are encouraging everyone to spend Valentine's Day downtown. You can, you know, shop, get something for your gal, something for your guy, have something to eat, grab a bottle of booze. You know, there's all kinds of stuff that you can do downtown.
Okay. The next meeting of the Downtown West Orange Alliance?
Is the February 20, 7:00, in the conference room here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Madam Clerk, we have to wait till seven o'clock.
We can.
Okay. So anybody want to talk about anything else?
I was gonna say something for matters pending or...
Yeah, might as well.
It isn't anything major. I'll just share with the council. So I had a couple of weeks ago, had a meeting with the superintendent and the Board of Ed President, Mr. Albert. I guess this is technically a liaison report. So just going over with Ms. Menendez, if there's anything that the council, like, may need to get in touch with the school district at all for any reason, just go directly through her. She'd like all correspondence through her and copy Mr. Albert on it, so I just wanted to let the board know. So time to time, a few of us like to, may do a project with the school district, which is, you know, fine. They love all the community interaction, but she wants to be aware, so just don't, you know, don't contact the principal or department head. Everything should go through her and copy the board president on it. That's their protocol.
Good point.
Okay? Conversation came up in regards to permits and something, you know, we have... I just relate to the administration. For example, we had... It was a nice event with the Liberty Middle School with the HRC, so there's, like, different things with permits on what they need to do on their end, so we also had a conversation about permits and as far as utilizing the school and whatnot. So it was a good, productive meeting, and, you know, they're excited to get some projects underway this year, so hopefully we could have, you know, community involvement. We talked about some programs with our seniors with intergenerational activities, so they're, you know, right now they're a little overwhelmed with a few things they have to do, so they want everything to come through the superintendent and just, of course, let, you know, let me know, because I'm also the liaison to the...
Okay.
For the board, so that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to also say something else that's been going on, the communications between our pedestrian safety board. Mr. Andy Anderson, who basically is a member of our board, he used to work for the county and Detective's Bureau, now he's the county safety, you know, pedestrian safety and driving. And what he's been doing now, he's meeting with the Township of Milburn, because the Township of Milburn wants to mimic our West Orange Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. They feel it's something that they would like to do.
Nice.
Something they don't have, is something that would better their pedestrian safety program, and also would like to mimic our downtown West Orange, because that's something they don't have. And they felt with their new street, complete streets program, which didn't work out as well as they thought, they felt if they'd follow a lot of our points, you know, involving the merchants, involving the residents, when we did, particularly with the road diet, they want to do the same thing. So I know they've reached out, you know, Andy has reached out to Megan and to bring them into the picture, so I'm really proud of it, how other communities are looking at what we've done here in West Orange, and they want to copy what we're doing. And also Livingston. Livingston would like to do a pedestrian safety, because right now, there are only two townships that have a pedestrian safety advisory board, that's ourselves and the Township of Montclair. So I want to bring that out, that this is what's happening, and I can't thank Andy Anderson enough. He's been such a godsend to our board, and he's given us the tools that we need and the direction that we needed to make our board even, even better. So I just want to bring that out to what's going on in our community. And I'll update you, because I'll be seeing the mayor of Milburn at my next joint meeting, so I'll get some feedback from her, too, but she's really interested in what we've been doing. So that's any... Oh, I'm sorry.
And Council President, if you could just let Mr. Albert know when you are having your pedestrian safety meetings, just send him an email, because they are gonna send a representative from the school board, especially when you're talking grants and joint partnerships. They just want to be aware what's going on in their schools at all times, so they wanted to make sure that they are notified.
No, thank you. No, I've already added her to the meeting list that went out, and I also notified Board of Education members.
Good.
You know, Ms. Mordecai, Mr. Albert, you know, those people. I've let them know that there is a meeting, and so none of them can make it in this next meeting, but hopefully Elizabeth will get back to me, Elizabeth Hughes, and will let me know the superintendent will be attending.
Okay, great.
But thank you for that. But I do... We do need to not neglect that. They need to be involved in what we're doing.
I know when I sat in that seat, you don't want to be blindsided if something's happening in the schools, and you're the last to know about it when you're on the school board, so...
Particularly with our Safe Roots to School. That's very important, and they need to be involved with that.
I agree.
Very good call out. Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody? Yes, Council?
Did you want to... Did any of the council members want to ask questions now about resolutions, or at least start?
It's up to you. Anyone have any questions, or? No? Should we say council people, not the public?
Oh, yeah, council people.
The council people, yeah. Council... Councilman Krokoviac?
Yeah, I'll ask one about Resolution 48-19, having to do with some ancillary work at Vincent's Pond.
Okay.
There was apparently some... An open issue going back to, I think, the 1990s about a potential suspicious discharge. And I had asked what actually had happened with that. I don't think I got an email. Mr. Gross, you responded back and said, "See attached emails from Mr. Lepore." I don't think there was one that specifically addressed that issue. There was stuff about the dam, but not about this, unless I'm totally confused. Is it possible that Mr. Lepore's...
There was a second email that was sent later that may have more information on that.
Right, but they were both about the dam, weren't they?
Yes.
Okay. I was actually asking about this outstanding suspicious discharge issue and didn't see anything from Mr. Lepore on that.
There was also an email that came in from one of our consultants, so I'll just have to check to see, to make sure that that went out. I thought it did, but... I mean, I can tell you, the 50,000-foot level of it is that it's been outstanding for a long, long time. It's never gotten resolved, and they finally have gotten it to a point where we can now take action to do some work there.
Here he is.
They've released us to do that. There comes Mr. Lepore.
Good timing.
Oh, Mr. Lepore. Good evening, sir.
We're batting out of order.
Must've heard your name, you know.
We're talking about that, the longstanding issue that got resolved, that allows us to do some more work or do work on our sites.
Correct. We had had... We applied for a grant and some loans to make some recreational improvements, not just at Degnan Park, but also at Lafayette Playground. And there's some environmental conditions that go along with that, very similar to any funding from Green Acres. It required a preliminary assessment of both sites. There were some areas of concern identified at both sites, which we then moved to a site investigation, and the site investigation is indicating that there's no adverse environmental problems at any of... Either of the site, however, there are still some open cases that pertain to some discharges that were called into the DEP back in 1994, which need to be closed out. So there's no finding of any problem. There's just a procedure that now has to be followed to close out those cases.
So can you tell us anything about the nature of this 1994 incident? Why it isn't closed out? What actually happened?
I don't necessarily... I don't really remember too much about either one. One of them may have been simply they were doing some cleaning of some line striping equipment at the high school, which is immediately upstream of this, and that may have led to one of the discharges. I'm not sure about the other. But again, the important thing is, there's no evidence that there's any problem associated with those calls to the DEP.
Okay.
So it's a formality now to close it out. The DEP won't shut it or won't close out without a licensed site remediation professional doing their diligence and their work to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Councilman?
Yeah, I actually do.
Please do.
Glad you asked. On Agenda Item DD, Resolution 5719, it's a resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with the Shade Tree Department for the Township Forester. And I wanted to just ask about that because, as you may recall, perhaps six months to a year ago, we had a resident come who had filed an Oprah request for all of the information about the permits that are supposed to be filed as part of the tree protection ordinance. And what we found in that presentation that she made was that we are not following the ordinance in any way, shape, or form in terms of documenting and tracking all of the permits and the permit requests. And I looked at the contract, the professional service contract for the forester. There's no question that Mr. Linson knows his trees and vegetation inside and out, eyes closed. He's a really good forester. But that certainly seems to me to be an issue that needs to be addressed and perhaps even included specifically in the contract, that unless he's not the person who's supposed to be enforcing that part of the ordinance, of the tree protection ordinance. Can you shed any light on that?
Well, certainly, Mr. Linson is the enforcer as well as the overseer of all activities under our tree removal ordinance. I think the... To distinguish what I believe was some of the problems was that there's two layers of tree removal activity. One which absolutely requires a permit, and those which are for three trees or less on a property that's not subject to a development application. And there, there's a less formal requirement for really just tracking, that make sure that that applicant just advises the forester, that they plan to remove the trees, and there's an acknowledgement and a record-keeping of that, simply because, you know, three today doesn't mean three tomorrow. It means three 365 days from now, but not within that period. And I think that's where some of the concern was, that that application and process wasn't being followed as stringently as major applications that were going before land use laws. So if you need to think that there's some language that needs to be placed in there, you know, it's simply he has to enforce and administer the tree removal permit of which that's a part.
Right. And then there was the whole issue that the resident raised about there appear to be very little, if any, collection, any proof of collection of the permit fees that are required from the residential side. And that, to me, is an issue, because I think we should be collecting the fees if we're not...
I'll go back and check. I'm not sure if the removal of three trees or less in a calendar... Not a calendar year, 365-day period triggered a permit fee, but I'll have to go back and check it.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
Yeah, those are not really what I'm talking about, because there's virtually no... There's virtually no records of the people who take down the trees and are supposed to file... I can't remember the time, but...
There's certain terminology that they do.
A certain term after you cut down the trees. I don't know whether it's five days, 10 days, but there are virtually none of those in the records that the resident spoke about from her Oprah. But what I was really concerned about is that there did not appear to be any... Very little documentation of any permit fees that were paid, even for the residential side. If you take down more than three trees, you have to get the forester to come in and look at all that, and there didn't seem to be any documentation of that.
I know very often, sometimes with land use applications, those fees are submitted as part of the application process, so there's exchanges between the planning department and Mr. Linson for those fees. But I can follow up to make sure that anything that requires a fee, as far as a permit to remove trees, is that is...
Correct.
Fees are charged and properly collected and deposited.
Mr. Lepore, you'll be here for the meeting, right? So if Councilman Krokoviac has any more questions, we can continue.
Yes.
But right now, we have to move on to our public meeting at 7:00. Madam Clerk?
This is...
Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Thank you, Mr. Lepore. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on September 26, 2018, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on October 4, 2018. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman Krokoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Garino?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Good evening, West Orange. Right now, would someone like to approach the council and ask a question, make a statement or comment? Please raise your hand, and I'll call you up. Please raise your hand and I'll call you up. Ah, Mrs. Morelli. Mrs. Morelli. I said, "Miss Morelli." It's Mrs. Morelli. Good evening.
Good evening. Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. I have a whole bunch of stuff here. I'm going to be all over the place. Recently, nursing homes and assisted living facilities have been reaching out to me. They want to work with the community. They want to partner with the community and they want to join us. This is Alaris that's on Pleasant Valley Way. They're having a health and wellness program and they're inviting the senior community to join with Richard, who's a certified senior fitness trainer. Engage in training and educating the benefits of strength, balance, and cognitive fitness to perform ADLs with confidence and self-esteem. It's on Thursday, February 7. Because of the storm, I got this really late. Maybe Karen, you can post this on the bulletin board. Seniors are invited. I also have some cards. You didn't leave me enough of these.
From 2:30 to 3:30 p.m.
The problem is unless they have their own transportation, they can't get to these events. So that's the sad part. I can't guarantee anybody will be there. Some cards. The Jewish Federation put out, I have to get more of these, but I want Karen to put some of them on the table regarding the resources that the Federation offers. There's a lot of stuff out there for seniors. Another issue is, we do have interaction with Alaris, Arden Courts. I was there at a meeting Friday in Canterbury. People doing volunteer work. They want seniors to volunteer and help seniors in the facilities. It's amazing how they socialize when these folks go in there and just talk with them. They do knitting, crocheting. This is something more. Arden Courts has a memory program. I think it's once a month. I have to get that literature where they're inviting the community. I don't know if we can provide any kind of transportation for seniors who might want to go to this if this takes off and they get involved and want to go. I will be talking about this Wednesday at the Pleasantdale Seniors Meeting also. A few months ago, somebody posted on Facebook that those of us that are complaining should, those of us complaining about senior issues should go out and volunteer, go to different places. One place they should go to is East Orange and then come back and tell the council what East Orange does and suggest we do it here. Strangely, I had been doing that for a couple of years. But today was an interesting day. I was invited. I was one of the guests. Excuse me, it was Diversity Day. It was a really interesting program. They had, seniors in East Orange all wore these outfits that were their tradition from the different countries they come from. They did their different dances, music. The food was fantastic. It was a great day and I was guest of honor. So I'm back here doing what that person said I should do. I went to East Orange and I'm back here telling you what you should be doing as a council. Let's see. The other thing is the status of the soliciting ordinance. Where are we at, what's happening? And Mr. Guarino, right now, West Orange is the only township that doesn't have a senior citizen advisory board. These other people don't have pedestrian safety boards. We don't have a senior citizen advisory board. We've got recognition. In the 27th Legislative District, where Mr. John McKean, our Assemblyman, was the mayor, every township has an advisory board. We don't.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anybody else want to say anything? No? Okay. I know Mr. Baglisi's here, but he's just here because there's nothing going. And I wasn't going to put Mr. Baglisi on the spot. Thank you, Ms. Brill. So I'll close public comment. And my colleagues, Council McCroviak, do you have anything to say, sir?
I was just going to say to Ms. Morelli, thanks very much for coming and talking about the solicitation ordinance. You and I have spoken about this a couple of times. I am in the process of doing some research to see what other towns do about the darkness issue of limiting solicitation. And I hope to get back to you in the next week or so.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Okay, thank you. Well, to Mrs. Morelli, thank you. When you mentioned Alaris, we also have Arden Courts, Summit Ridge. I think of the other senior homes that are in town. Many are chamber members and being involved in the chamber, any of their events, I will ask them to promote through the township. I think they probably just do it internally, but especially events like this and really anything else that they do, I'll encourage them through the Chamber Master that we have to reach out into the community. Thank you.
She has an announcement.
Just can I, can I stop for a second, Madam Clerk, if it's okay? I think a resident just came in, wanted to make a comment and I feel it should be allowed. So please come up forward and- No, it's okay.
We started early tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Yolka Tweetin. I'm the president of the West Orange African Heritage Organization. As you know, February is Black History Month and we are, we have many interesting programs and activities planned for this month. And I just want to tell you about a few and they're all open to the public. Kicking off with the West Orange African Heritage Organization's Throwback Thursday. It's a meet and greet. And it's a chat and chew. It is at the Primavera Restaurant in West Orange. And it's on February 7. So come out and meet some new neighbors and just have a good time, drink a little and eat and have fun. We're having a scholarship of BYOBV party. It's called the Madegras and it's a fundraiser for scholarship. It's February the 9th and it's going to be at the VFW 52 Eisenhower Parkway in Roseland. And it's $35. Please come and attend. And last year, we raised over $6,000 for scholarship. This year, we hope to have $10,000 to give to some deserving West Orange High School graduates. On February 9th, the West Orange Library will partner with the Nubian Quilters to recognize that 2019 is the 400th anniversary of the induction of the first African indentured servants brought to North America. So stop by the library and see these magnificent handmade quilts. The West Orange African, our history, West Orange African Organization is partnering with the West Orange Public Library in sponsoring our first black film festival on February the 17th. And it's The Invincible Defeat of Mr. and Pete. And it's really a great movie. I saw it at the film festival in Martha's Vineyard. And it's a coming-of-age story about two inner-city youths who are left to fend for themselves over the summer after their mothers were taken away by the authorities. It's an excellent film and Jennifer Hudson is one of the main characters. What else are we doing? And it's really worth seeing. On February 21st, the West Orange African Heritage Organization and the Montclair Y, MCA, will co-sponsor Running 1,000 Miles for Freedom. As told by the great-great-great-granddaughter of William and Ellen Kraft, how they escaped slavery and how they shared their story. And they'll be sharing, their great-great-great-granddaughter will be sharing the story of how they helped free other slaves. And finally, on February 24th, there will be a discussion, music, and refreshments and highlights and celebrating to be a discussion, music, and refreshments as we highlight and celebrate the courage, tenacity, struggles, and contributions of the untold story of black abolitionists. Sponsored by the Montclair Drifters and the West Orange African Heritage Organization, Joyce Harley will facilitate this program. So mark your calendars. Come out and see us. It's all open to the public. So we hope you come out and enjoy that time with us. Thank you, and I'm sorry I was late.
Ms. Tweetin?
Always welcome.
Before you go, you mentioned February 24th, the discussion. Where is that going to take place and what time?
That's at the library.
At the library?
We're doing a lot with the library here.
And what time?
That's at 2:30.
2:30.
It's soon today.
Thank you.
And there will also be refreshments at all of our conferences. We have to-
Councilwoman? Councilwoman McCartney?
I did, I had another question on the film festival on February 17. What was that date? I mean, I'm sorry, not what the date, what the time was?
It's the 17th.
At what time?
At 2:30.
Great. I'll see, they're lucky to have you. This is an amazing schedule and a short amount of time. Good for you.
I'll be back at work before we begin tomorrow. And I thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you. Okay. So we'll, Councilwoman Matute Brown? Any questions, any responses?
No, just thank you for all the hard work and commitment dedication. I get the emails and I'm always having a great time with the organization. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks so much. Have a good day.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes, so, Ms. Tweetin's leaving. I just, you know, thank her for her list of activities. And as she mentioned earlier, when we had, the organization had given us one of the letters. One of their activities that they do is going, doing the knitting club at the nursing homes and just getting the residents involved. And thank you to all the volunteers out there for being available. Ms. Morelli, you know, we're a work in progress. Hopefully, we'll get this grant. We're working on a path to bring in senior services, trying to corral it all together. But in the interim, till we hopefully get the grant and get on our path of where we need to be, you know, Mrs. Duffy is there to take any suggestions that you may want to implement now. So, you know, I'll talk to her, meet with her. So if you have any new ideas as far as transportation, if you know you have a group of individuals, you know, you could always call them and arrange. But if there's, you know, if you have just individuals that maybe one or, one or two people want to go, we can make arrangements for that and they need to call that in to get them to these activities. So I encourage you, as you always do, to make the phone call and we can work with Mr. Sayers to make sure while that happens. And last but not least, in regards to the solicitation ordinance, I had reviewed it and I know, was it you, Mr. Gross, or, no, it was Mr. Kaiser last meeting, that had mentioned, and I know you're getting a little frustrated, but, and it just, it's funny. It just happened to me, I think it was yesterday, I was on the phone with Ms. Brill and someone came to my door at 3:00 in the afternoon and I asked them if they had a permit. And I'm not going to embarrass the person who came or the, it was a realtor or what company they worked for, but they, she was going door-to-door, you know, soliciting. And I asked her if she had a permit and she said no. And I said, "Well, you need a permit." And so I can't encourage enough for folks, if someone's knocking on your door, first of all, if you don't feel comfortable, do not answer. That's rule number one. Ask if there's, if they have a permit. And from the stats that Mr. Kaiser told us, only three organizations or three companies took out permits last year. So with all the different kind of people that knock on our doors, they're not even following the ordinance. They're not even obtaining a permit. So thank you to Madam Clerk. After our meeting last time, she put out a few Facebook posts. We're trying to get some publications out there, asking, had asked the police department. I know they do the seminars, especially with Officer Squires. And so I'd like for them to put something together as one of the educational pieces that we may have. It's some conversation I had with the Health Department. So hopefully, we could get, keep getting that information out there because as we do need to look at the ordinance, we also have to get the word out there that these people do not have permits and they shouldn't be knocking and folks shouldn't, don't have to answer their doors. So we're going to have to continue to work on that as a council here. So, and it is troublesome. But she did not know, I'm going to have the realtor, the one company, I'm going to let them know I have saved the person's card for Ms. Carnival. She's going to, you know, reach out to them to let them know that we have this ordinance. And, you know, that's what we'll have to do is I get information and we know different organizations that are having people knock on doors, whether they know it or not. We're going to have to contact them and let them know they need a permit. They just can't knock on our doors, especially in the middle of the day, too. So, but thank you again for bringing that to our attention. And Madam Clerk, thank you for your help with this to get the word out, so.
I think a big part of the problem is that many people don't know that they have to have a permit. And that's the biggest problem, from what I've seen.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'd like to recommend to my council colleagues that we go to Resolution 59-19, our resolution for an executive session. 5919.
All right, so we're going to, I'm going to make a motion to approve 5919 to go into executive session since we haven't done the consent agenda yet.
Right. Can we do, do we need to do the consent agenda first and then do that or just make the resolu, you know?
Yeah, you could do that.
Okay, so continue with the consent agenda, Madam Clerk, thank you.
So I need to know if any resolutions are being pulled.
Councilwoman Castellino, any resolutions could be pulled or?
Well, I have a question on 47-19. So I guess pull it. A question on 55-19. But just a question.
So you want 47 pulled?
Yeah. So I may ask it to be amended.
55, she has a question. Just a question? Just a question.
Well, are we doing that first or you want to just pull them first?
We can come back for the questions. We're just going to highlight the questions and then come back.
So just the ones we want pulled, right? Okay, so I'll leave my questions. Because I-
I would just ask your question.
I, 50-
I think we should have just adopted the executive session and went in.
Yeah, we, this is, yeah, we, there's a lot here tonight.
Can we just adopt the executive session resolution and do it that way?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 5919?
Some of-
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman McCroviak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Okay, so now we can go into executive session.
We will be back shortly. We'll be adjourning to the executive session. So we'll be back as soon as possible. Thank you very much for your patience. Okay. We're back. Thank you for your patience waiting for us to return. We had our executive session meeting, discussed a number of things. And to bring it to you, I would like to invite our mayor to the podium to discuss what we discussed at our executive session. Thank you, Mayor Parisi, welcome.
Thank you, Council President. As you all know, I am really never a suit and tie guy, but I usually would have a jacket, at least at a public meeting. But I came for the executive session, was not aware I was going to be in public. So excuse my more casual-than-usual attire tonight. But I appreciate the council's time and certainly the public who waited for, I guess, an hour and a half for the executive session. So I know it's a lot to ask of people and I appreciate the council's time. This was obviously a big issue that we talked about in executive session. Now the council is going to consider some resolutions to be added to the agenda tonight. As we spoke in the executive session, the township has been actively negotiating with Montclair Country Club for the purchase of Rock Spring Golf Course, roughly 140 acres. As we talked about in the executive session, there are several issues that need to be digested and talked about. The administration will be in a position, we just need a couple more days to finalize some things before we're prepared to issue dollar amounts in more details of the acquisition. But in the meantime, we need the council to consider four resolutions so we can do due diligence in getting us to the February 19th meeting in which we will formally ask the council to consider not only the contract for the purchase of the property, but the bond ordinance to finance it. So there are four resolutions we're going to ask to add tonight to begin the process of due diligence. The first is environmental, though we have some preliminary environmental studies from the property from maybe late last year. We obviously need to do our own before we would potentially acquire any property. So we're asking for the approval of the environmental consultant, who does a ton of work for the town already, to do some preliminary work just to make sure the property is clean and certainly that there's no surprises. The second is an appraiser. As we all know, no matter how small or how large the property, government cannot buy property without getting an appraisal. property without getting an appraisal, so we need to do an appraisal of the property. The third is the legal cost. We need to have a real estate attorney to do some of that work, ultimately what would be title work and to do all that necessary background. And the fourth is, of course, the bonding council for this. We think it's important to start that process. So there are four resolutions we're asking to add to the agenda tonight, all with the premise of getting us to a point as a governing body to entertain on the 19th an ordinance and a contract for the purchase of Rock Spring. We'll talk in much more detail on that night, but the township, after several discussions with the owners of the property, Essex County officials over the last five or six weeks, we believe this is in the best interest of the community. We understand there's a tax impact, but we think if we can get through these first couple years, we'll be able to replace some revenue, maintain it as a golf course, and then have a lot of options for open space and recreational space as well. Also, just quickly, although we'll make a full presentation in a few weeks, this deal, as we talked about in executive session, will include an RFP process, which will also be on the agenda for the 19th, to get an operator in there. We've already perused the market and talked to people who operate other golf courses in the state to maintain it as a golf course. So the administration's plan is to purchase the property, but to have it maintained and operated as a public golf course for the next two years while we evaluate what our long-term plans might be. So I know that was a lengthy executive session and a lot to digest. Administration will provide as much information to the council as possible in advance of the February 12th deadline for getting you the information for the 19th meeting. And will certainly in a day or two be able to release more definitive information about the purchase price and some of the other implications for the town. So we think this is a huge opportunity with tremendous possibilities for the town. The alternative is to have it go to the free market and have developers drooling to buy it and then stuck with losing the public land for what would most likely be a densely populated residential development, which we don't think is in the best interest of the community. So tremendous upside from an open space preservation, a recreation perspective, maintaining golf, a lot of upsides and possibilities, we're pretty excited about it. I know this was a lot to consider in one night, but certainly we'll hope that as we talk more about it, the council will share our enthusiasm for the possibilities that this could provide. Not an opportunity, as I mentioned in executive session, that any of us could have ever imagined, you know, only a couple of years ago, but this is a reality we're forced with and we think this is the right step. The county, as we talked about, in the end was part of the discussions, but in the end wasn't interested in pursuing it and the club wasn't interested in, you know, the offer that the county had had. So that's really, that's kind of it. We're going to ask you to entertain these four resolutions to begin the due diligence process. February 19th meeting will be a presentation, will be the bond, the first reading of the bond ordinance, the contract, and also the approval of an RFP to begin that process for getting a golf operator in there so we don't lose the golf season. And we'll have a lot of time available for questions at the meeting and certainly if the council has questions in the meantime, we'll certainly entertain that. And I think that we haven't definitively laid that out yet. I think it, sometime after the 19th, assuming the council passes it on introduction to get us to the second reading, we'll plan an appropriate public meeting for the public to come on some given night in some location that's convenient for people to talk more about it. So that's kind of it. I appreciate the time, I'm grateful for the amount of executive session you gave us tonight. I'm sure that was longer than routine executive sessions and appreciate the members of the public who waited it out.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
If I could, one of the things we discussed is how quickly we can get a lot of useful information out to the public. And you had said that we want to be careful about it tonight.
So we think within a couple of days, again, this is negotiation, you don't negotiate in public and we're buying from a private entity, so they have some interests that they're trying to protect and dealing with their membership. So we just need a couple more days before things will be finalized on their end and we would be comfortable in making the information available. As soon as we're able to, we'll issue a press statement, publicize it on social media and all the other avenues, letting people know what the purchase price is, how we're looking to address this and the impact it will have on the community.
Great. And just the other thing is, we talked a lot about due diligence, that that's what we're entering into now, we haven't made any final decisions.
No, this ultimately, any negotiation that the contract, that the administration has with large purchases like this or even small considerations are always subject to the council approval. So the public watching this, the members who are here tonight, there's nothing definitive. The resolutions we're asking for tonight, hoping the council will approve them, doesn't bind us to anything. It just begins the due diligence process, getting us to the 19th, and that ultimately, along with the second reading, will determine if we're going to move forward with this. So anything the administration has done is always subject to council approval.
Thank you for your efforts. It's a potential great opportunity, so thank you.
Madam Clerk? Process for-
So if you could pass it to me.
The process for-
Make sure Mr. Gross has a copy, please. I'd like to get rid, there's enough copies for everybody in the room. You should keep them when you have the number of again. The first resolution that's being presented, as the mayor indicated, a government entity cannot purchase property without having an appraisal. So the first resolution is to retain Hendrix Appraisal Company, LLC. As the council knows, Hendrick, Mark Hendrix has been the township's appraiser for longer than I've been an attorney, so, you know, before the mayor's spinoff was the mayor. So bottom line is, Mr. Hendrix is intimately familiar with the property. We've requested that he give us his price, $8,500, not to exceed $8,500, that appraisal must be performed and available before the council considers on a second reading, the bond ordinance will have that well before March 5th. So that's what the substance is of this first resolution.
So I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counsel, hold on a minute, let me get my little call here. Counselwoman Kukovia?
Yes.
Counselwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Counselwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we're passing out the next resolution. Mr. Tranque, am I correct that because we are presenting this without it being on the agenda, that we have to pass it by at least four of the five votes? Or do they still get the three?
That's right. That's what I'm saying. The short answer is it was unanimous. I have to talk to Ms. Kaitner, I, for me, it's always the short end of the button, but whatever.
Next resolution?
So this second resolution, Council President, is consistent with the mayor's indicated that especially in New Jersey, you can all appreciate, you're not going to buy property without making sure environment, I'm sorry?
Do we need more copies?
Yeah. Here, we have one.
This is an extra one for the first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, no, I got one.
You got one?
Yeah.
So this is a resolution to retain Matrix New World, their environmental consulting company, and of course, not to exceed $1,000. They will be looking for an environmental assessment, as the mayor indicated, there was a refinance done on this property in September and there was full environmental done at that point. Those environmental have been made available to township, but Matrix needs to review them and then the township has to basically update them and do their own. By doing that process, number one, you'll know what you're buying, sort of speaking, that there's no environmental surprises. And number two, it's my understanding as a matter of law that once that environmental assessment is done, that if there's anything that isn't disclosed, because there's nothing that exists, you're not liable for that. So I will tell you from the two things that, from the environmental reports that have been provided, there were three underground storage tanks that didn't exist by the meeting yard, they have been removed for years, there are monitoring wells installed, and there's natural attenuation going on as exists currently. The fact that there was a refinance and the fact that six, maybe six months ago, and the fact that the club was purchased three years ago reflect that those issues are, I'll use the word de minimis, but that's why you hired Matrix to do that evaluation and make you comfortable on the issue. So that's resolution number two.
Is there a motion to approve 63-19?
Some moved.
Second.
Second.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Kukovia?
Yes.
Counselwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Counselwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Resolution number three, as the mayor indicated, that if this acquisition is to go forward, there will have to be a bond issue. A bond issue is obviously critical because this is a capital expenditure. You're buying potentially 140 acres, therefore, you don't have to, you don't have to and you would never pay for that operating expenses. And in order to do that, the recommendation of the law department is to retain Everett Johnson, the Wentz Goldman Spencer firm to begin that. Also, this process will involve obviously two readings, a sale of bonds and whatnot. This is at the bond council, as is set forth in this proposal, are being basically to draft the bonds.
Oh, I need, is there one more?
We need one more.
One more. God bless.
Ms. Calut?
Thanks. I just, I had a question.
Yes.
With, when we pass this resolution, when are they going to draft a bond? I mean, it doesn't happen until, until we have the, hire the appraiser and have the environmental study done, then this happens?
Well, we're moving on parrot tracks. The only way the club is willing to consider selling the township and keeping it off the market is if we have a closing by April 30th. So we're going to build in 60 days to go beyond that, but the short answer, Counselwoman, is they will draft again drafting bond ordinance immediately so that you can have it by next Wednesday, as is the agenda, so you can consider it on the first reading on February 19th. There will also be a process that Mr. Gross, as CFO, will embark with the bond council to go to the local finance board to waive the initial deposit that will lessen the burden financially on the town.
Thank you.
There'll be a resolution on the 19th for that as well.
And that would be, that would be because the state law generally requires us 5% cash down payment, so it could be quite sizable.
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
Is there a question?
We do believe, and again, this goes back to the mayor's overarching point, because this is such a unique opportunity to preserve open space and to, you know, have all these possibilities, that the cause, which is what has to be shown by the township, would be substantial, because if we lose this opportunity, you're never getting it back in this generation. So that, but again, that's a process. And you got to get on the agenda for the local finance board, which requires, again, someone, Mr. Johnson's given me tentative deadlines. In order to get on the March agenda, you have to submit three weeks in advance. We won't let him submit until you give a green light on February 19th, but we, it requires that on February 20th, the paperwork he can deliver to get on the agenda for the March, I think it's the 3rd something, of the 3rd, Mr. Gross, but you're absolutely right, Counselwoman Kukovia, we're on a tight, tight timeframe.
Just a quick question, I'm looking at some of the particulars of the contract. The numbers that Mr. Johnson and his firm are requesting in terms of their compensation, are they a little bit higher than what we generally pay our regular bond council?
No, it is my, I asked him to compare it and again, I was told this is actually slightly lower than our firm, but we can get you that now. I think it's right in the same market. These are, as you can see on page, I love when people, page two, it's, it's, it's a $3,500 plus a thousand per thousand of the bond issued. And then there's a rate for, an hourly rate for the, so again, it does, it does, it's definitely competitive, it might be slightly less than the big management firm, but it's in the same ballpark.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve 64-19?
Some moved.
Second. Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Kukovia?
Yes.
Counselwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Counselwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
The final resolution is to authorize the law department to hire a special real estate The rate is the special council rate of $175 and the rate will not exceed $10,000 in operating services. This will be, we don't have a draft contract yet because again, the board of Montclair Golf Club refused to release it to us until we at least had some tentative green light to do this due diligence. So we expect to have it tomorrow so that it can be negotiated and finalized, you know, by next Wednesday when it'll be presented to council. Does anyone?
No.
So then, I don't have a name of a real estate attorney on this. I've talked to several, obviously the reduced rate is an issue and the timing. I didn't want anybody who couldn't commit to get it done basically in the next, you know, two weeks. So I have a couple calls out and I want somebody who specializes in real estate. So again, I'm asking for authority to, as long as they come within parameters, to hire the firm tomorrow.
Mr. Tranque, just a quick question, is there some reason why the attorneys that we typically use for real estate here don't work for this?
Well, it would be my firm, because again, we don't have, we don't do real estate transactions, as you know, if you're probably count on one hand, now we have it done. Again, in this case, because the amount of work that's going to be needed in this tight timeframe, I recommended to the mayor, to the administration, to hire somebody who will solve, will fixate on the contract and who is purely real estate counsel. I think that's the best way to drive this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve 65-19?
Some moved.
Second.
Counselwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Counselwoman Kukovia?
Yes.
Counselwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Counselwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know who's tomorrow? Thank you.
Council President, just, I know the council has a lot of business to finish up tonight. I just want to thank again the council, this is a lot to digest, a lot's been happening in the last six weeks, so the administration has worked diligently, thanks to Mr. Tranque, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Gross, Mr. Lepore, Ken Kizer, who's not here, we've, our tax assessor, we've worked hard to bring this to the council. Time is of the essence, but this was a very unique situation and we think the possibilities are too great to ignore. There's been a lot of talk about the county, the county was great, county executive was cooperative and helpful, we've met with them several times, discussed the issue several times. In the end, it just wasn't something that was going to work out between the county and the club, but that was an opportunity for us and I think it's an opportunity for all of us in this community to do something pretty special on 140 acres of land that could help to define the community for a long time. So we, as I mentioned in the executive session, whatever time the council wants over the next two weeks and our professionals' time to ask questions, visit the property, we'll make that available, we'll issue some more of the particulars in a couple of days, we'll get all the information to the council well in advance of the 19th, we'll plan on doing a full presentation here on the 19th for first reading. If it were to pass on first reading, we'll plan on a public forum as well. So this is not something any of us two months ago would have ever imagined, but sometimes the best things that ever happened, happened unexpectedly. So thank you for your time tonight.
We appreciate your time, Mayor. Thank you very much and administrations and Mr. Tranque, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Nice job.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I signed, oh, I signed these.
Okay, yeah, I have to read.
I know.
All that, so.
Okay, continue.
Can we take a deep breath?
Yeah, let's take a deep breath, let's take a deep breath, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. This one too.
But, yeah. So we have his place.
Okay, so.
Hi.
Everybody have a deep breath?
Okay. Strapped on a seat.
We have a lot of reading material.
We'll go back to the consent agenda.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, January 22nd, 2019.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Counselwoman Castellino, any resolutions?
I, I think I gave one before, so, thank you, Mr. Plin, so 39.
You said 47 earlier.
You, 47-19.
Yeah, that one too, 47. Yeah, that one too, 47.
You want 39?
39, I had a question.
But don't pull?
Well, I'm, can we add to a resolution if I have a?
I need to get rid of it.
You'd have to amend it.
I mean.
You'd have to make a motion to amend something.
It was just a little tweak, but.
Do the other one first.
Okay. And the other one was just 56, just, I wanted Mr. Gross to go over.
So, you're actually only pulling one at this break moment?
47 and 39.
Oh, you want 39 to pull?
So, you have questions and just one pull, right?
Uh, for those, for those two, yes.
Okay.
When we're done.
Want to answer the question, answer the questions now?
Okay.
Then we'll go to the next council, oh.
The ones I want, okay, so, Mr. Trank, on 47 for Mr. DeFeo?
Yes.
So, I called you earlier today, so my question is, the, being that we're, we haven't approved we, the contract for the recycling center, I just didn't find this consistent with this lining up to that contract, so I didn't know if we should do this monthly until we finalize the other contract.
So, I think it's an excellent point, and because we are still trying to finalize that agreement, and the current vendor's on extension, if it's acceptable to the council, my recommendation would be, do you think we have a copy of the agenda?
Here.
Thank you. Have I gave the agreement, my, my recommendation would be that we provide a 30-day cancellation right. And in that way, if for some, keep in mind, the reason, as I think you and I discussed, if it was a different vendor, I think at least the administration's recommendation would be you need an environmental person, compliance officer, or whatever. But having said that, if it's acceptable to you, councilwomen, and the majority of the council, I have no problem providing that this agreement is terminated on 30 days' notice. So, if for some reason, we were to cease, and I don't know how we do that, operating the recycling center, and we no longer needed environmental compliance officer, then we could terminate the contract. So, if that's acceptable, we can make that amendment, and I can research.
I felt comfortable with that.
So, yeah, it should be voted with the stipulation that it will be, again, don't let the mayor sign this one.
I will.
I will add a provision as paragraph eight, that the township reserves the right to cancel this agreement on 30 days' written notice. And then I'll get Mr. DeFeo to sign it, and get it to you hopefully in a day or so, and then.
Right, the mayor won't sign until Friday, so.
Right, so, just, so again, if acceptable, Council President, just a resolution, 47-19 is approved, subject to adding a provision, so it's terminated on 30 days' notice.
Okay, okay. Can I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matu Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next question.
I actually, I'm sorry, I pulled the wrong one. It was 55, not 39. 39, I just had a question. Actually, I don't have a question anymore on 39, so 55, resolution for the master plan?
Yes.
So, I had presented to the planning board, Councilwoman, I think you were present that evening, that they incorporate the senior citizen study within the master plan. So, I didn't know if there should be, just reading through what would be included in here, I, actually, I should have called Councilwoman earlier to see if she had any suggestions to be able to, like, under the housing plan element.
Is, just, just as some background on this particular resolution, the planning board some time ago passed a resolution authorizing a contract with Mr. Greigle to do this work. Subsequent, at that point in time, when it actually was adopted, there was no money in the budget. Then later on, in the next year, there was actually money placed in the budget, and I think there must have been some kind of communication issue, and the planning board went ahead and authorized Mr. Greigle to move forward. So, this resolution, Knight, is really memorializing the action taken by the planning board that really needed to be taken by the council.
Yeah, because I recall we did.
As far as changing terms and conditions of what was warranted to him, I think you'd have to do that as a separate side, not part of this.
Okay.
Yeah, I would answer that, but I just wanted to say that the housing plan element is already in here, and when we do, that January 29th, when that meeting was canceled?
Yeah.
That would be the time to
Okay.
address those type of issues that would be included, because the housing plan element is already part of the master plan, and senior is, senior are already in there. So, when we have that open public meeting, where you as a stakeholder have your interview, you can add that.
Okay.
It doesn't change.
So, we don't have to put it here, we'll incorporate it there.
Hiring his firm to do that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was covered.
Okay. Are you done with your, your questions?
Uh, with that, well, that's as far as what was pulled, and 56, I wanted Mr. Gross to go over the medical for the self-insured health benefits program.
Yes, this is a resolution authorized to move forward and move from UMR, who is our current third-party administrator
Number 36.
to Maritane, which is a subsidiary or some corporation of Etna. Etna, the Etna network is far greater, larger number in St. New Jersey than the UMR, and as good as we have done, and we have done very well with UMR, one of the issues that we've found, though, now, I've been going through two years of service with them, is is that our staff is going out of network about 30% of the time. That's a high number. So, we did a cross-check of providers with Etna Network, and they, they came back to us with their, their information, and when they did the analysis, they're, they're covered about 87% of the providers that, that we're using. So, without any change in employee behavior, we should be able to pick up a sizable amount of savings from going in-network as opposed to out-of-network. So, we're putting this before you tonight, we're moving forward this year. We're looking, we think that we're going to save some substantial funds. We hope that's the case. As the year goes on, we'll take a look at reevaluating our rates to the employees as well. And we can put it before you tonight, because we think this will be a, it's certainly not going to cost us more, it should save us a lot. Ad will save the employees as well.
Yeah.
Because if they go in-network, they're no longer paying the high deductibles and the high costs.
And the copays.
Okay.
I had a question.
Wait, I'm just, I'll be right with the council, I just want to make sure she, then I'll, okay.
No, no, I, I think this is beneficial, plus we're at, you know, same or better coverage, so we don't break anything contractually.
Yeah, we're not changing our plan at all. Our plan itself is not changing.
Yeah, no, good.
It's just, it's just the administration of the plan.
Okay. Councilwoman?
I'm done, Councilwoman.
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman.
It's for the same resolution for the third-party administrator, so the increase that, I'm going to assume that there was an increase that triggered the change for third-party administrator?
Actually, not. There was not an increase. But what we're looking at with them is, they're going to offer us, because of this difference in their provider network, we're going to get additional discounts that we weren't getting with UMR, and that's going to save us money. Because we, you know, we're self, for our medical, we're self-insured.
Yes.
So, we pay the actual claims. So, to the extent that the third-party administrator negotiates with basically 17% more doctors and, and health, of health professionals, and to give us bigger discounts, that'll be passed through to us, and it gets passed through to the employee as well. So, this is not because of a cost increase, this is because we believe moving to this provider, which is, Etna's the biggest, has the biggest network in the state, the biggest providers, provider lists in the state. It's much more advantageous for us and for the employees.
So, there wasn't, the only thing that we're changing, we're not talking about changing insurance plans, you're talking about changing.
We're using the same plan right now. What we're talking about tonight is, we, our same-plan documents are being replicated, so we're not changing anything in terms of our coverages. The only thing we're changing is the actual network that our employees can go, that they get to participate in, and that network open, is open to a lot more of our doctors than the current network.
So, whether doctors will be.
Mm-hmm. Oh, not pertaining to this resolution.
Okay. Any other questions and any other resolutions?
Yes, I actually do.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
I don't know if she.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
My guess, I don't want to hear it.
Yeah, no, good, your turn. You're up with that.
Got to be careful, I'm like.
You're up with that.
Okay, so, actually, there's three that I had a question that I wanted to pull. 39, resolution 3919.
Okay, how about? You're asking a question or you're pulling it?
I'd like to pull it. 4419 as well, pull. I'm so sorry, I just got the wrong one here.
It's okay, it's a huge agenda.
Yeah.
It is.
Biggest of the year, all the professional services.
I know.
4719, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, there was another one, I just pulled the wrong one when I was going through this. I'm sorry, bear with me for a moment, please.
Okay. Scan your agenda.
Yeah, it's just too small for me to see, that's why I'm, it's getting to that time where I need reading glasses. I just have to make the time to get there to do them.
Do I have time to go to the restroom?
The other one's.
I'll come back to you. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's on the, I lost it. All right.
Do you remember what it was about?
Yes, it was, it was the bond council.
Oh, where's that one? I just have it on my hands.
50?
It's not 50.
No, it's redevelopment, I'm sorry.
That's redevelopment, yeah, that's the one I.
It's on the.
And it's the one just before.
That's the one.
49.
Yeah, 49.
Did I pull that one already? Oh, it is 49. Okay, so, those are the ones I wanted to pull.
49.
49.
So, it's 4919, 44, and 39.
Okay.
Councilwoman McCartney?
You see all the scribble I have all over my agenda, but really, my questions are answered. I'm okay.
You're okay? Councilman Kukoviac?
Thank you. I would like to pull resolution 3219. Like to ask a question about 3519. This is the authorizing a professional service agreement with CME Associates. This is proposing to change the engineering firm that advises the planning board and the zoning board. I'm just wondering why we're making a change?
Can you ask, ask the question, Mr. Gross or Mr. Sayers, can you answer the councilman's question?
No, they, they were, they all submitted their proposals, and we picked CME instead of, who was the other?
Paul.
Almond.
Well, yes, we picked CME instead of Paul. No, no other reason, just that they picked CME rather than Paul.
What, you just flip a coin?
No, it wasn't my decision, it was the mayor's decision.
Oh, okay, but you don't know why he?
No, I just wanted to go with CME rather than Paul.
No, that's interesting. Not to interrupt with that, that was one of my questions here about CME, did an outstanding job in our West Essex Highlands mediation.
Right, and on the joint meeting.
Roman and Almond have done an outstanding job on planning and zoning. Very thorough.
Anything else, Councilman?
Ah, yes, just going through my.
All my questions have been answered.
Resolution 5119.
5119, you're pulling it, sir?
Yes, please. Resolution 5319.
In bold?
Yes, please. And then I have a question about 5419. It's the resolution authorizing the township to retain Paul Greigle to prepare a study as to the demographic impact of multifamily development within the township of West Orange. So, I'd like to get a better understanding of where that's, where that's coming from.
Mayor Greasy.
And, okay, I, that's good, but what's the rationale for us to be spending money? Why are we concerned about this, that sort of thing?
I assume it's the obvious from what I understand, because I'm the one who asked Greigle to provide the proposal. The mayor wants to look at actual projects that have been developed in the surrounding communities and here in West Orange, to determine how many schoolchildren and whatnot are generated from, because that obviously, as you know, Councilman, you know, we have all, we have different projects that are, you know, being proposed around town, whether, so you're familiar. And so, it's a question of what generates, and what our experience has been, and more importantly, and again, maybe Mr. Gross can comment on this, because I think he was involved in some of the discussion before it came to me, looking at some of the surrounding communities that are involved in some of these issues.
Okay, so you mentioned schoolchildren, that's obviously a concern, but I would think you could get like a summer intern and call around to all the towns and say, how many schoolchildren are coming from each one of your developments? Is there some, it just seems like you're looking for a more sophisticated view than, than schoolchildren?
Well, I'll yield to Mr. Gross.
Well, in terms, I'm not sure terms, picking up the phone and calling boards of ed and asking them for data on their students, I don't think that's, that's probably going to work. And, and the municipality doesn't necessarily have that data as well. It really is, if you're going to get it, you'll pretty, pretty much have to get it from the sources themselves, the different facilities, and ask them to, to do that. And most of them, in my experience, when I've done, I've actually done similar work, they do cooperate, but it takes time and energy and, and asking the right questions. So, it's not, I wouldn't, not a job I'd give to a summer intern. I know that we've answered this question many times before, anecdotally, based on information we have. That's, that information has developed over the last 10 to 15 years, whether that, you know, to the extent that it's still the same numbers and the same percentages, I think it's worth a while to go out and take a look at this and get up to date. Not only do we have out there, within the community, within the surrounding communities, now we have data within our own community, so we can, that we can look at and really try to take a good look and come with, come up with solid information, new information, more updated information.
Yeah, I have a.
I'm just, I'm just looking at the, the contract, the proposal. It seems, it seems a little thin for offering not to exceed $6,000. It says, "To prepare a study analyzing the demographic impacts of multifamily residential development. This study would include an inventory of recently constructed multifamily residential developments, as well as those that are under construction or planned, and a number of municipalities in the vicinity of West Orange." I'm not sure Moorestown is in the vicinity of West Orange, but okay. "For developments that have already been constructed and occupied, we will undertake research as to the number of school-aged children and total residents in each development." Okay, so, so that sort of outlines the study, but it doesn't say why, it doesn't say what conclusions are going to be brought, brought up, it doesn't talk about any sort of report.
Frankly, you don't give them the conclusions, that's what you want.
No, come on, I'm not saying come up with the conclusions, but you're telling them why you want him to be looking at it.
Look.
It just, it just says school-aged children.
The bottom line of the whole thing is that there are, as you know, as well as all of us, we just had a major discussion in that room about, there's three or four different entities right now that are out there that are looking to redevelop in town. And what we want to know is what the residents are going to be and how many schoolchildren that are possibly going to be generated from that, so that if in fact they do come in and they want to put 400 units or 500 units in a, somewhere, we'll have that information to give the planning board and to the zoning board, so that they can make a decision. That's the main reason for this whole thing. That's what it's all about.
And I think that's a legitimate concern. And I think that's a legitimate concern, but I'm not sure about $6,000, I'm not sure why the school district shouldn't be the ones doing this, so...
Again, well, don't you think, councilman, just because the zoning is controlled here, the mix, all the issues that you and I are grappling with, even with the people housing stuff. So, first of all, the board is not going to do it, they're not going to go out and get the proposal, because the impact is going to fall on the whole town, you know, so, you know, again, and also, as you know, part of it plays into what's the mix, how many one-bedrooms, you know, you know, Central Avenue is a perfect example of a whole neighborhood that we're all excited about, we unanimously, you know, the council unanimously approved it, but it seems relevant to know whether that, how that will generate and where that will take us. So, again, obviously, the mayor is asking for the considerations so we can, you know, obtain that information. It's up to the council to allocate money if it feels it's appropriate.
And I just know when this issue has come up before, I think we've quoted data and research from the Blaustein School, right, at Rutgers, and we've also used, you know, individual accounts here locally, so...
Rutgers has a recent study on it, you're absolutely right. So that's one, but I think that's why the mayor said we have a general study prepared by Rutgers, but now it's bringing it down to certain neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you, I would like to pull this, this resolution, please.
Fifty-four?
Yes.
Excuse me, councilman, are we still talking about this resolution? Because I wanted to make a comment, or do we, will I come back to that?
Well, he's pulling the resolutions.
Okay.
He's pulling it, so...
Councilman, were you pulling Thirty-five, nineteen also?
No. It wasn't on my list, yes.
Right, no, I just asked a question about that.
Okay.
Just why the change.
I'm sorry?
If he doesn't, I will...
I'm sorry, now I have to find my place again, I apologize. Okay. I think we're going to refer to this going forward as the Matute Brown maneuver. Should try to find your, I've lost my place.
Councilman, you have glasses on.
Okay. Okay, so that was, I'm sorry, that was Fifty-four, nineteen. I'd also, let's see, I've already talked about Fifty-seven, nineteen, and...
But you said Fifty-three, nineteen?
No, no.
One, one meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I did want to, I did want to pull Fifty-three, nineteen.
You did pull it.
Yes, okay.
Fifty-one, fifty-three, fifty-four, thirty-two.
Yes, that's...
Councilwoman, I know you want to pull another one.
I did, I thought you were going to pull Thirty-five, nineteen, but I do, I would pull Thirty-five, nineteen.
If I could just ask one more question about Resolution Fifty-eight, nineteen. This is the resolution authorizing the execution of a shared services agreement with the county of Essex to provide welfare and human services for the township of West Orange. I just wanted to get more details about this, because it seemed a little unclear to me exactly what we were, I guess, outsourcing or shared servicing with, how that was going to work. We don't actually have a shared service agreement, so, which would normally lay this stuff out. Maybe you could just be a little bit more clear. I know Ms. Duffy is retiring, and she handles our welfare and among another, among a number of other functions. So I'm just trying to figure out what's the impact, whether it's just Ms. Duffy or whether it's larger.
She's retiring, and she was doing that job, and the person, whoever we're looking to rehire is not going to be, most of the towns do it through the county. We're one of the very few towns in Essex County that does it in-house. So now that since Patty's retiring, we're giving it back to the county. That's all.
And what about all the other things that Ms. Duffy does? I know, I think we actually give her a stipend for something else that she does?
We're in the process of, we have our, our information out there, we have a lot of applications, they're due in by February eighth. Once the third, and we're going to interview all the people and figure out what we're going to do, but the welfare part of what Ms. Duffy does now is going to the county.
Okay, and these other things that she, she did, including the stipend?
We're going to do in-house.
Okay, with somebody else? Is that what you're saying? Okay, okay, thank you, that's...
Councilman?
That's it.
I am, please, Thirty-five, nineteen.
Are we ready to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
I think Councilwoman McCartney just, did you just...
Just put Thirty-five, yeah, for CME.
Okay, so we'll approve the two that are left on the consent agenda.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Madam Clerk, start the roll call of resolutions.
Okay, so I'll try to go in order if I can get the numbers straight. Okay, so Thirty-two, nineteen, Councilwoman Krokovia.
This is not really for debate, I mean, I've, I mean, I'm glad to debate it, but I just, the last year or two, I thought that we should look for, look out in the market and see if we could find a different person at this role, and that's why I just pulled it, I just wanted to vote against the reappointment.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Thirty-two, nineteen?
So moved.
Okay, Councilwoman Catalina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
And to comment that the outstanding services that Ken Kaser provides and has provided.
Thirty-five, nineteen, Councilwoman McCartney?
All right, so this is a resolution authorizing, and I, as I stated before, CME Associates did provide an outstanding study at the West Essex Highlands mediation session, but all my years on the council, I mean, on the planning board, Allyn and Bowman have also provided outstanding services, so I don't know if there's something that we don't know about about changing them, you know, I would see no reason to change. Or use CME when we need CME, but...
So I will, again, the mayor believed that this was the appropriate way to go, he also reviewed the traffic study that you're aware of. The, I think in any of these issues, there are responsiveness questions and issues, and I also do think there are a number of things going on in town that I do believe that that was the mayor's analysis. But again, if multiple councilpeople have a question or issue on this, then I would recommend that you, again, I don't know if it's a majority of the council on either side, but if there are multiple questions, again, because these are professionals and because there is no desire to in any way, shape, or form be derogatory on anyone or whatnot, if you want more information, then I would recommend you move to table, and in that way, we'll get more input from the mayor and come back in the next council meeting, and if there are particular personnel reasons, then it would be appropriate to go to executive session. So again, I can only tell you what my knowledge is of the mayor's process.
Then I would move to table, make a motion to table, to find out, I think.
Okay, hold on.
Madam Clerk?
Yeah, hold on, give me a second. Just for the record, I had a conversation with Mr. Lapore earlier, so I was okay to vote tonight.
If you like, if Mr. Lapore could answer any questions, I mean...
I would rather table.
A motion to table takes precedence over everything else. So therefore, you would vote no on the motion, and if a majority defeats the motion, then it goes to the motion, and then, and then if a majority can approve it. So I would just, you know, that's just a decision for the council as to timing and whatnot, so it seems to me you would move the motion to table, you would vote against it, if it carries, then it's automatically table, and it can come off the table at the next meeting. If it's defeated, then you'll go and debate the main motion. I agree with that, is that right?
Yes, that's good.
So there was a motion to table?
Yes, Councilwoman Catalina? This is for a motion to table.
To ta, to table it?
Yes.
I mean, if they need more time, I'll, I have no problem tabling it, so... Yes. Getting tired, yes.
Councilwoman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Wait.
To table.
I don't understand what I'm saying, is, I mean, I'm saying from my experience with CME, from all the projects that I've dealt with them on the joint meeting, and, I mean, the major billion-dollar construction, and when they came here and made a presentation to this council to explain in detail that you even approved the additional spending, I can't understand, but if the majority of my colleagues feel they need, they need more information, then, oh, yes, table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Thirty-nine, nineteen, Councilwoman Matute Brown.
Thirty-nine, nineteen. Okay, as, as I have expressed over and over often, while I appreciate Paul Greigle's expertise, and I've looked at his portfolio, and I'm very impressed with what their, what his company does, what his firm does, I still am, particularly now with all of the redevelopment that is happening, we're doing a study, a demographic study, an impact study, environmental study. I feel that a consultant planner is not the best way to go for the direction in which we're heading. I think an investment has to be made for a full-time planner, particularly since we're talking about some projects that, as we experienced tonight, are extensive, and I really, really want to support, and I'm looking for my colleagues to weigh in on this, the fact that we need a cohesive plan. I know that we're reviewing the master plan, and I'm really, really excited to participate in that as a stakeholder myself, but we owe it to our community to start moving forward. It has been offered, the mayor has offered more time with Mr. Greigle. I don't think that that is the focus at this point for us. We are looking at major developments, and we need a cohesive plan. And that includes, in my perspective, a full-time planner. I know that budget constraints are what they are, but we're looking to jump into a major expense. I think this is an investment that's worthwhile having, and I don't support having a part-time consultant anymore. I think that it's in our best interest for growth, the way we are growing, that we invest in a full-time planner.
Councilman?
I agree, I've said this for a number of years, and I agree with the Councilwoman wholeheartedly.
Any other comments from my council colleagues?
I would say that Paul Greigle has met all of the conditions that are in this agreement. I don't agree with the full-time planner, just the additional expense of a full-time person, and even all of the resolutions that you referred to that we just passed are not, they refer to a plan, which we don't have, but they are all expenditures that would have to take place, regardless of a full-time planner or a part-time planner. So I disagree that we need a full-time planner. And there are, there is, you're absolutely right, that there is quite a bit of redevelopment and projects that are out there, and I believe that Paul, and the planning board, and the zoning board have been handling them well.
Councilwoman, would you like to say anything else, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
Go ahead.
Again, as I expressed, I think that their portfolio, their firm portfolio is very impressive, it's just not moved us in the direction that we've needed to go. And, yeah, I understand that we are making the investments and paying all of the bills that we have to pay, and constraints being what they are, but it is an investment, and we need to make sure that we do, like we're doing this evening, right, with the four resolutions that we approved, due diligence. I think we owe this to our community to help us move forward cohesively and in progress.
Councilwoman Catalina?
Yeah, and I respect my colleagues not, not supporting this, and more so, Councilwoman, because, you know, you haven't had the experience of working with Mr. Greigle, I've been in a few meetings with him, I feel we get a good bang for a buck. He's very, like, it's not, he's just not a typical consultant, he's been around for a while, he knows the community. You know, Susan Borg was a great loss to us when we, we lost her. She was a resident that would drive through the township and go above and beyond her, you know, her job description. And so I think, you know, investigating this and having many conversations with many different people, that is part of, now, it was a big void, and you're right, I mean, to fill those shoes would need a full-time person. It was, it would be investment to go back, because, you know, who do we take away this year? The police, the firemen, you're taking away a personnel appointment, or two, for what would it cost for us to, to fill this gap in the budget? But I feel, you know, I've just had the experience, and maybe in time you'll feel a little different, maybe you won't, but I'm, I'm fine with moving forward this tonight. I think sometimes we need someone more looking into economic development, and that's something, another area that this planner wouldn't cover with that. So I'm confident I, that we will move forward with him, and I think we need to, you know, the mayor approved hours for him when we need it, and to my knowledge, Mr. Sares, I assume we, we have in, whenever he's needed for additional hours, he's available to us, right? There hasn't been a time where you said, no, we can't afford that expense, we make sure he's available.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Councilman?
Just to follow up, I totally agree with you, Councilwoman Catalina. In fact, that's what I've been saying, is that we need a full-time planner with economic development experience for our community. And not to bash Mr. Greigle at all, but I don't see that there's any way that someone who is only a part-timer can provide the breadth and the depth of what we need, except at a full-time level. And Ms. Borg was great, she was both a planner and an architect, and she really made a difference here, and I would anticipate that if we could get another full-time planner with economic development experience, that we could, that we could see the benefit of that rather quickly.
Council President, could I ask that you, I'd like to reach out to the mayor on this issue, and could you hold a vote on this for a couple minutes, so I can see, because I'd like, I know we've spoken to Councilwoman Matute Brown on this, and again, I think he wants to have a further discussion on that with everyone, so could you just not vote on this for five minutes, so I can see if I can be authorized to make a suggestion that might be productive?
Please do.
Thank you.
We can move on to the next poll.
I'm sorry?
If you might, I'd vote down my contact.
Step out of the room, will ya?
Now is the time.
You know, I just want to make one comment. I just want to make one comment. You know, I am talking to the councilman, I just want to make one comment. I hear a lot of people saying about, let's have a full-time planner, and we needed a full-time planner, and we go back to Susan Borg. And a lot of the people that are complaining for a full-time planner are people that bashed this woman over the years, and nobody deny it, because there are people who come and they want a full-time planner, and they bashed this poor woman extremely, over and over again for ridiculous reasons. This woman worked with a major illness and then finally had to leave her job. And what I'm saying is that, you know, you keep saying you want a full-time planner, but you had a full-time planner, and the same people that want it were the ones that bashed her, and that's all I'm going to say.
Well, I'd like to follow up on that, Councilman, because I don't want anybody thinking that I, that I am who you're speaking about, because I have never, I have never bashed her. She did excellent work, she made a real difference in the downtown Prism redevelopment, and I don't know who you're talking about, but it isn't me, and I just want the record to reflect that.
Nobody said you, Councilman.
That didn't come across.
I'm sorry?
That did not come across.
Right.
Did you want to move on to the next one?
Yes, move on to the next.
Yeah, on that note, maybe.
Move to the next one.
Forty-four, nineteen was pulled by Councilwoman Matute Brown.
I pulled this one. I have a concern with respect to conflicts of interest when it comes to bond council, this firm, particularly because our township attorney is a member of this firm. This is not McMahon.
That's not Forty-four, nineteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, so sorry.
Nineteen is Fairview Insurance.
Oh, Forty-four, nineteen, okay. Oh, 44-19, okay. And yes, absolutely, Fairview Insurance. I have a concern with respect to, and I know Mr. Gross did provide me with some information today that I have not been able to compare. I think that having Fairview Insurance and not comparing fairly with the state plan, and I know you gave me some numbers and I hope to look over them soon, but we keep saying we don't have money for a town planner or very much of any of the other things that we need. I'm looking to save costs. And I think that if we explore cost savings in this regard, it might be beneficial to us, particularly since the budget is coming. So I would like to offer that we share the information that Mr. Gross, I don't know, were you copied on?
Yeah, but, go ahead, finish your, I'll.
The information that, okay, that was shared this afternoon. I have not had the time to read it and discuss it further. So I'm asking that we table this until we have a further discussion and a full understanding so that we can understand whether or not going with the state planner, I mean, state planner, state health benefits would not save us costs instead of using.
Just as an FYI, this resolution would have no impact on whether you went to state health benefits or not. It would impact, if we went with state health benefits, it would impact them, but there would be no preclusion to doing that.
I do understand because of the way that they're compensated, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. But at the end of the day, it is, their compensation costs are factored into insurance premiums that are passed down to our employees. So that is a concern.
We, for multiple reasons, we are required to have a broker of record right now, based on the way we're structured right now. If we were to go to state health benefits, that would not erase our need for a broker of record. It's just me, the broker of record would not be dealing with the state benefit portion of it. So just, you know, I understand exactly what you're talking about in terms of your concerns. This particular resolution does not preclude us from doing what we need to do in terms of moving forward with our health benefits. And again, we would need a broker of record either way.
The more important point is, is we can't go to the state health benefit plan, because contractually, we have to provide a health plan to our employees that's equal to or better than what we currently have. And the state health benefit plan is not equal to or better than what we have right now. So even if we wanted, even if you wanted to vote to go to the state health benefit plan, you couldn't because it would be in violation of the seven unions' contracts that we have in place right now.
I understand that. But I would challenge you that there are some options that the state plan has that we need to discuss and consider.
Not us.
Well, not that we need to discuss. We, yes, absolutely, that the unions need to discuss. But there are, I can't just blanketly accept that the state health benefits plan isn't something that would benefit our budget, because there are some options. I just would like to table this until we have that discussion.
I don't think anybody is suggesting that the township and the administration is not willing to look at it. In fact, we have looked at it. But at this point in time, it is not an option for us. Right now, there's other resolutions out here that are options for us. This particular one is a housekeeping, right today, today, we're required to have a broker of record. That's, you know, they perform functions for us and for our employees that if we did not have them, we would have to find other ways to provide those services. We certainly are not prepared to do that tonight. So, I mean, this is, like I said, this is a requirement for us based on the way we're structured now. If we were to move away from this, adopting this does not stop you from going to New Jersey Health Benefits if indeed we were able to come to a determination that everybody decided, yeah, that's the best thing to do.
You still need a broker of record.
You still.
Based on our plan.
The other plan, that's right.
Yeah. You still need a broker of record, one way or the other. And like I said, the biggest problem is, is that going to the state health benefit plan is in violation of the contracts. It's not equal to or better than what we have today.
I understand. And I heard what you said, but I have a different opinion with respect to equal to or better.
You're entitled to your opinion. I just wanted to let you know what the fact was.
Is there a motion to table? Does the president, is there a second?
There's no motion to table?
Well, I did express that I want, that's why I pulled it, because I wanted to table it. So I know we hadn't made a motion, but that's the reason I pulled it.
Madam Clerk?
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm not making a motion, because I have no issue with it. But I just wanted, I did look at the information today and again, going back and I, as far as negotiations are concerned, again, looking at the state plan, so there's items in there that even if the premium's lower and the cost is lower, there are items in there that the coverage is less than what they have now. And again, going back to what Mr. Sayers is stating, is we can't decide on that now. So I hear what you're saying and I get what you're saying, but that's, the unions have to negotiate that with the administration. So if that's what they want and they negotiate that with the administration, we could go the state plan. So it's not what we want. They have to negotiate that. And I'm not, the "they" are the unions. So they have to be willing to negotiate that as well. And I, you know, unless they have a proposal that they made that to the administration, you know, that's between them. So right now, we just have to wait it out until negotiations go through, you know, because I don't think any of us wouldn't mind having to pay less for health insurance, but I think some of the employees may mind if all of a sudden they have a $10 copay and now that medication is $125 for a prescription. So those are the things they have to weigh, you know, they have to decide in negotiations.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I think we're talking about two different things. I understand what you're saying about looking at cost, but that's a plan. We're not voting on a plan. We're voting on a broker. So that's, that's what this is right now.
I do understand that.
Any other comments?
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 44?
No, I actually want them to make a motion to table.
Oh, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on one second.
So again, it's a straight vote. If people want to move on tonight, you vote no.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
All right, hold on, I'm writing. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, no.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Council President Corino?
No.
The motion fails.
That's not to say we can't investigate plans.
No, I understand.
Okay, and now, motion to approve Resolution 44-19.
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Madam Clerk?
Can we go back to 39-19?
Sure, 39-19.
So Councilwoman and Councilman Kukovia, I reach out to the mayor because obviously you, I know, had an in-depth conversation with him. And he is receptive to the concept that in the budgeting process, if you determine to put that position in the budget, which is obviously up to the council, that then there would be a process to try to find a suitable candidate. As I think a couple of people in the council say, you know, Susan Borg unfortunately has not been with us for quite some time. So what the mayor recommends is that we put the same provision that Councilwoman Castellino recommended with regard to Monsieur DeFeo, to add a provision that says this can be terminated on 30 days' written notice. That way, if the council puts a position in the budget and then a candidate is found, obviously you probably want some transition and then you can terminate this contract as opposed to, this is a one-year contract as it's currently written. So we would just add that language, this agreement is turnable on 30 days' written notice. And then if you find a candidate and it's, you know, it's a process, then there is that avenue. And if that's acceptable under the council, the administration can easily make that amendment to the agreement. And the mayor hopes that you recognize he's willing to work, obviously always with the council and obviously with you to meet those issues, especially in light of, as you correctly stated, the possibilities which are critical with considering this potential acquisition of Rock Spring.
We'll add that language, we'll add that language to the resolution.
I don't have issue with it. But Mr. Gross, is there a likelihood? I mean, are we at cap with this budget? I mean, we have, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to entertain something that is in.
I'm not going to preempt the budget process.
No.
I mean, I hear you. If you all have a wish list, we would get it.
What the mayor and Mr. Trank are suggesting is that the council should, if the council can, should consider this in the budget process. If indeed council decides with all other factors to put this money in, then it would be, then go out and find the right candidate.
But it's going to take, you know, we take the budget process and then we've got to find a candidate. But we could then start that process. In the interim, you've got to have a waiting. You've got to have a waiting. And obviously, I think the mayor in me, he strongly asked that you consider me with Mr. Greigl and talk about it. So the administration will fully cooperate on all levels.
Okay.
Thank you.
So do you?
So, if.
Motion to.
To approve as amended?
Or you could approve, if the language, yes, it is acceptable, you could move to approve with the additional approval.
Okay, well, let's first see if there's a motion to accept it as written, as proposed originally. Okay? So I'll make a motion to, you know.
Is there a motion to approve 39-19?
Some move.
Is there a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a procedural question? If there is a, if there is a, I guess, a motion to or an offer, I don't know what Mr. Trank is doing or how to characterize it.
The administration, excellent question. I appreciate the question. If the councilwoman is indicating that she will support the resolution with that additional language, then the administration will respectfully ask that we accommodate and add that to it. If the councilwoman says that's not acceptable, then obviously we're very, very comfortable with Mr. Greigl on his services. But the mayor wanted us to extend that opportunity if the councilwoman felt, and you obviously, councilman, felt that was appropriate and would deal with the issue for tonight. We want to move forward and we have no problem with looking for the best candidates in this area. We believe Mr. Greigl is that. But again, if the council decides to allocate the budget, like, it's exactly what Mr. Gross said, if the council creates the position and budgets it and says, let's go out and find that, you know, rock star candidate, then we'll be in the process. It's not just, but, you know, that would take, obviously, a period of time. For now, we need a planning director. And obviously, the administration feels strongly with Mr. Greigl has and can be used to certain capacity. So we see no downside if it's acceptable to the councilwoman and you, councilman, to add that termination provision.
That's great. I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear about what we were voting on, because it seemed to me that we should be voting on an amended, an amended resolution.
But if you say it doesn't matter, then obviously we're not, if it's not going to change your vote, then obviously we're comfortable with what's before you. If you say you'll be supportive with that amendment, the mayor will authorize us to make that amendment. But it's up to you.
I'd be supportive of it. I mean, we need, and that's not even a question. I understand we need a planning director.
So the administration proposes a resolution that's before the council, 39-19, with the added language that we would add at the end that indicates this agreement is turnable on 30 days' written notice.
Did you understand it that way when you made your motions?
Well, that's the resolution.
Oh, that was not what he said.
That's not what I was, but if you want to do that first one, we'll see how it goes. With the adjusted language, I mean, I'm not going to.
I'm okay adding the language, however, when it comes to the budget process, I mean, I, I don't seem optimistic, especially with our needs for police, policemen, firemen. And so I guess that's a conversation for another day.
No commitment by anybody there on that.
Yeah, this doesn't really do anything. I just don't want, I just don't want to spin wheels when we're at the budget presentation. We'll have a.
So you're saying that during the budget hearing, this is when we're going to discuss this?
Yeah, we've got a conversation. I just don't see it happening because also there's senior, you know, we all sit here, I know disrespect, but, you know, we have senior services and we're trying to move in that direction and there's all these other needs that we have. And so on my priority list, I don't, I don't see me supporting this because we have other needs. And I know, but you haven't sat through your first budget yet, so.
I sat on that side of the budget, but I understand.
It's a lot different when you're on this side, trust me, and you're on the phone constantly with all the directors and everybody's needs.
I appreciate that.
And we have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of needs and there's only so much money. So for what we're getting, for the, for what we're getting for our money with Mr. Greigl, I just don't see the need to go for a planner at this stage of the game unless they come up with extra money. Then, of course, I would be supportive of it. So the language I just, really doesn't mean it, you know, I don't mind putting it in for tonight.
Councilman?
Just a quick observation that we were talking about Ms. Duffy retiring. So that will, in, at least partially.
We're trying to expand that.
Please, if I could just finish. It seems to me that it potentially frees up at least some money that we could consider. We don't have, we don't have the budget, so we don't know what the mayor is proposing. So we'll just have to take a look at it and see.
Yeah, yeah. But again, you're, we're looking to add, if we don't get the grant, then we need a fallback plan. So that's, there's a lot of, you know, there's always moving parts. So for tonight's conversation, I have no problem adding the language.
Great.
Is everyone, because you had, there was a motion.
On the original one?
Yeah.
On the original.
I voted no to the language.
So, okay, so we're going to do as amended and then we'll take.
The administration, respectfully for tonight, it's exactly what Councilwoman Kukovia said. We recommend that you adopt it with the additional language that Councilwoman Matute Brown is indicating makes exercise. It doesn't hurt any.
Okay, doesn't hurt.
It neither.
A second, that's why I asked.
Give your shot.
You know, let's. God, how much a hire for it.
Yeah.
That's all we're suggesting, the flexibility.
Yeah, gives us flexibility. Maybe we'll hit the lottery.
I have to take the vote as amended, so.
Okay.
Councilwoman Castellino?
This is for the amendment.
For the amendment.
Uh, that'll be yes.
Okay. Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Oh, yes.
Council President Corino?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't believe.
And you'll send me that?
I really don't.
All right, 49-19. Councilwoman Matute Brown, you pulled that.
49-19. Oh, yes, this is, nothing disparaging to our township attorney. But I do believe that my concern lies with conflicts of interest. So with McManaman, Scotland and Baumann being bond counsel, should there arise a need for, I don't know, pursuit of a claim for a breach of fiduciary responsibilities, you being a member of that firm and township counsel, would we have to go out of our pocket to hire a special counsel in that consideration?
Well, you'd have to pay either way. Keep in mind, that's not, if that claim hypothetically, go to that hypothetical. First of all, every counsel provides an insurance policy. So if any attorney were ever deviated from the standard. So the short answer is, if there became a need to pursue counsel for some malpractice or alleged malpractice, number one, it would be a conflict, so I would never be involved in it, that I can promise you. And number two, you would hire special counsel. Even if you hired me to go after some other lawyer, you'd pay for that on an hourly basis also. So it's no different, is the short answer. And just specifically, there's never been such a claim asserted, and just in the rubric of bond counsel, that is such a statutory area, I'm not exactly sure how it would arise. But again, if it did hypothetically arise, you would definitely get special counsel. You would pay, just like you, if I were going to handle it, you'd pay me, but I would never handle it. So yes, there would be conflict and yes, you would pay for it. And yes, it's no different. So again, I don't think it.
Okay, so didn't we just pass a resolution for Rock Spring for a special bond counsel?
Well, on that one, I felt. Well, on that one, I, I felt it was, I want to get, because there's so much going on, on that potential, I want to have different professionals involved in different aspects.
So it could happen, yes.
No, I understand it could happen, it's just that I feel that with our township attorney also being a member of this firm, particularly, I just feel it's a conflict of interest.
And a conflict is what? Because they may make a mistake, and I won't pursue them? I won't pursue them, I guarantee you, but that's no different than if any firm makes a mistake, bottom line is, because the law department selects the counsel, I probably wouldn't handle it anyway, because I would have been the one involved in the choice of there, and you're paying either way, because as, as you know, my contract, which covers certain things, does not cover litigation. Litigation is a separate matter, so it's not financially going to affect you, and the fact that I would not pursue this firm or any pursuit firm, you, you hire all the firms based upon my recommendation, so it's highly unlikely that I would ever sue another law firm. Besides, back then, it's not my specialty anyway. If you decided that there was a cause of action or a claim, then I would recommend you hire a special counsel.
Okay.
So, it is not a conflict under the RPCs or whatnot to have the same counsel be municipal attorney and be bond counsel.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve 4919?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Next resolution, Madam Clerk? Just trying to keep, sorry.
I know, I need time to write the vote.
Sorry.
For my minutes. Resolution 5119. Councilman Krokowiak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Again, this is another one where I have voted in the, in the past to suggest that we take a look at perhaps getting new blood here, and I don't want to, I don't need to debate it, I just wanted to be consistent with previous votes.
Any other comments?
I wholeheartedly disagree.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 51-19?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino? Resolution 53-19, Councilman Krokowiak?
Yes, thank you. Again, I just want to be consistent with previous votes, I think, I think we should do something to save ourselves the $24,000 for this social media and marketing coordinator.
Is there a motion to approve 5319?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino? Okay, hold on. 5419 was pulled by Councilman Krokowiak.
Right, and we have previously discussed this, and I, I don't think we should do this, at the very least, without more information as to why we should be spending the $6,000.
Is there a motion to approve 54-19?
Well, I just want to ask a question. So, I know the school board did, so again, so the school board did a demographic study on, I think it was last year. So, they don't include, you know, at a, other town, so that's, obviously, I could see why they want to do this. However, with this study, Mr. Searson, Mr. Gross, so this is just for new development, this will have nothing to do with all the apartment complexes we have now in town, this has nothing to do with any other dwellings that are being, like, one to four, one to four family.
I think it's going to look at everything.
Mr. Trank, I don't think you were in the room when, when we had this conversation. Were you?
I look at the proposal.
Okay, I couldn't remember.
54...
I think he's going, the idea is to look at what, you know, what different types of development causes what type of growth pattern, so they could, now, if there's current data available, they'll get that, you know, if the, so if the board of ed has current data that they're willing to participate.
Well, they have, it's your old study, yeah.
So, I, I would, I would expect him to look at different scenarios, and that's part of what I think we're paying for.
Yeah, I do think it's, if you're looking at the four corners of the proposal, it says, it talks about recently constructed, but then it talks about the developments that have already been constructed and occupied, will undertake research as a number of, so I do think it's all in.
Well, that's why I made, God bless you, I made a note myself, like, one, one to four family or plus, higher than four, four fam, like, there's a bunch of multiple units down, down the bottom of the hill, are you looking at those?
Obviously, we're asking to do the most comprehensive review as possible.
All right, I will, and the reason for this, because of all the development that we're, we have on the table now.
And substantial, does it see any impact?
Yeah, because I know, I saw, I saw we did this study for Ms. Bishop, I, I saw that with all the available vacant land.
Yeah, that was pretty much...
All right, can we get a little, I guess, I, I didn't have time to call him today, I, I wanted to get a better understanding of this. Because multi-family, like I said, it could be one to four, four plus, that's...
But I assume the, the administration, my understanding is, is asking to do as comprehensive a study as possible. So, we have a limit, and we said we want to know what is being generated in the actual projects that are...
And this is supposed to be done in 30 days, is, is, do the administrative, administration need this back that quickly, this data, or?
Well, I mean, I think that the mayor wants the data as soon as possible, because it'll affect, you know, I mean, I think that we don't want to do a study that we don't get the results quickly, so I think that the goal is get the results, so I think, in the last, that's generally the provision I put in all these proposals, so that we don't authorize something that's not done quickly.
All right, can I, I'll, I'll move this tonight, but I would just like a little more clarification.
I mean, obviously, feel free to reach out to the mayor and feel free to comment on it.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 5419?
Some move.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
No.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Okay, that's all the resolutions. Ordinances on second and final reading, 2559-19, and ordinance amending Chapter 25, Sections 46.2, 46.5, and 46.6 of the revised general ordinances, planning board terms. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
At this time, anyone from the general public wishing to speak on ordinance 2559-19? Seeing none, I close public comment, I open the comments to my colleagues. Any comments on ordinance 2559-19?
We're updating the appointments from July to January to coincide with the change in election.
Correct. Is there a motion to approve 2559-19?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
God bless you.
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
God bless. 2560-19, and ordinance amending Chapter 2, Sections 8.9, 55.3, and 55.6, and Chapter 25, Sections 32.7, 47.5, and 47.6 of the revised general ordinances, updating the appointments from July to January. This is for all boards and commissions due to the election change. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes. At this time, to the general public, is there anyone in the general public wishing to speak on ordinance 2560-19? Seeing none, I close public comment, I open the comments to my council colleagues. Any comments?
More housekeeping.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 2560-19?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2560, I'm sorry, 2561-19, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, traffic subsection 7-32.2, restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances, this is a handicap space at 138 Watchung Avenue. Is there a motion to approve on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Krokowiak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Matute Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion?
I sent my pending matter earlier.
Seeing none, okay, no...
I have some, I've just, I'm, my computer is about to die, and I was hoping I could get it through my, my, my phone, but I can't get it through my phone either, but I just asked a bunch of questions about, an update on what the situation is with the remediation for Legionella, Legion and Legionos, Legionnaires' disease, whatever causes that.
Right.
Legionella.
I'm going to stop, I'm going to stop asking about it, because I'll just say the L-word from now on, okay? I'm sorry. Just wanted, if there's any update on the remediation and also the costs.
Well, we're pretty much where we were, we have, we still have one leg of, of the work to be done, and it's going to be an expensive leg, probably, we're going to have to go out and be able to put the specs together, could cost as much as $80,000 for the, the finishing off of the physical changes that need to be done. To date, we've spent or committed about $141,000. I think I mentioned to you that I thought this could reach that 25 mark, and it looks like it's going to come close to that.
I also wanted to follow up on some comments at the last council meeting, asking about what was going on with the fan here in the council chambers, and I think the administration was going to look into it. Mr. Laporte, I don't know, he didn't fall down or see?
No, he left.
He left.
I should have asked him while he was here, because I think he took the lead on that, but can you tell us a little bit? I, I haven't heard the fan tonight, so I think that's wonderful.
Well, we didn't turn the fan on.
Yeah, that's why.
We didn't turn it on. It's 60 degrees, 68 degrees.
Well, number two, there's two issues. Number one, that thermostat does not regulate the heat in this room.
Of course not.
Nope. All that thermostat is for, is for the air conditioning. So what we found out was that, believe it or not, 90% of this building, the heat is pumped into 90% of this building by one thermostat. So what we did was, we lowered that thermostat, and if you look at that tonight, you'll see the temperature went down. So that's number one with the heat. Number two, with the noise in the, in the air conditioning, Lenny has a company come in to take a look at that, they just haven't got it.
Okay, thank you.
Can you add thermostats?
What's that?
Can you add thermostats?
Well, the issue is the cost.
Yeah.
Right now, so.
The heat's not zoned.
Yeah, it's not zoned that way.
Doesn't matter how many thermostats you have, the heat is not zoned.
It's not zoned, okay.
I was kind of shocked when I found that out, that it was all coming from basically almost one thermostat.
You guys never picked that up all the time?
I never did.
There we go.
No, because the, none of it was, it was never brought up.
Yeah.
You know, it just didn't matter, but lately, obviously, because of the council chambers...
All of the energy efficiencies that we put in this building?
Of all the sustained energy and it's sustainable?
How was that overlooked?
Councilwoman McCartney?
I'm stunned, we did sensors, we did, I, I'm still stunned, between the sensors and...
What did you expect?
It's regulated by one thermostat.
All right.
Okay, anyway, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I favor...
Believe it or not, your, your position is not actually correct, because the more thermostats you have here, everybody in their offices can push them up to 90 and 100, rather than it being regulated by one thermostat.